All right, I've got 5:30. We'll call meeting to order again with legislative meetings. Hi, Alex, you want to do roll call?
Yes.
Steve, Karen?
Here.
Carol, honk out?
Here.
Jay Jones?
Here.
Lexi Murphy?
Here.
Gina?
Here.
Well, present. Presence of the forum as well. Dependents of guests, you hopefully signed in or will here by the end of tonight. And who has wants to sum you in or on the agenda? So those of you who are not, who would you like to speak? Your five minutes, you may go. Stand there and tell us who you are and...
Okay, Melinda Hanson. And about probably four to six weeks ago, there was an incident about our road. That happened and what started out with just a little issue, my road turned into much more. It led me to see the poor conduct of our council members and mayor. I found out there is not a code of conduct that the council for the council to follow. So apparently Lexi can make up lies, push her own agenda through. How many times has she done this in the past? Lexi told my daughter-in-law Abby in the store before the Monday night meeting that my street would soon have a no parking on the north side of the road. I don't understand how that can when there hadn't been a meeting yet. I confronted Lexi the next night uptown. She told me they were complaining to her all the time. I asked who they were. She said Bob and Charlene Brew and my sister-in-law Nancy Foreman. I went to both homes, talked to them, and neither one of them complained. The next day in the grocery store, she was bad-mouthing me. I've heard from a few people. I then met with Brenda. We talked about what the city lawyer had said. She said there is no conduct rules for the council. You don't have any rules to hold you guys accountable for anything. Which I see, that's bizarre to me. We have to be held accountable as citizens, but you don't have to be accountable for your actions here. So I heard that from a different councilperson that things have happened on different occasions with people not being held accountable for their actions. And yet, nothing was done. I was shocked when our mayor admitted she can't get the cop and the city workers to do their jobs properly. The cop gets out tiki-taki tickets, but he let the felony go. He left the felony go because he did not want to do the paperwork. I don't know how that works either. Really, we shouldn't need a code of conduct to hold someone who is representing our town to be held accountable. As for my road, we have an ambulance that got to my driveway and I got to the hospital safe. I don't see a need also for a large bus to go through our street. There are other options can be taken. Times where my family is all home together, you could look down my road, see, hey, it's busy. Maybe you could take another route, which I have done many times. Thank you.
Thank you, Melinda.
Thanks. I have a question.
A question for her?
What was the felony?
I told you Brenda, medications were taken off a back porch of someone, brought into the house, yes.
I didn't know what is term of a felony, sorry.
It's a felony to do that. And I think the principle is also looking into that. Anything else? Well, there's many more out there. You guys need to open your ears.
All right, the next.
I promise I'm going to be quiet tonight.
Can I sit while I do?
Yes, sure.
As you know, Charlie spent eight years on the council and so he was many times kind of on the nuisance committee. And we want to first say how much we appreciate that you have come up with an ordinance or enforcing ordinance as far as mowing your grass and keeping it clean, et cetera, et cetera. We spent about an hour driving up and down each street, both directions today. And I was appalled at people that don't have weeds like you're going to talk about. They're just eight inches, they're like three and four feet tall. And just to go back a little bit, we moved to Paulina in 1996. And at that time, there was not one single home for sale in the town. The only reason we were able to buy a home in Paulina was a friend of ours knew someone that said, "Oh, you know, I might be selling my house sometime soon." And so we went and talked to them and we said, "Can we buy your house?" So that's how we ended up staying in Paulina. And I have to tell you that that many years ago, it was a very super clean, well-kept, groomed town. And I see some big issues in the way people are maintaining their property. And if there's any way the council can help with enforcing any ordinances that are on the books or making a new one, go for it. Because we have a really nice, nice business district in town. And we need to work at it and keep it that way. Thank you.
In that list that we turned in, there's at least three, for a fact, three automobiles that have been parked, that are junk, have been parked for over a year. And nothing is ever done about it. Now, salvage yard will come and pick up things up for nothing. And mighty pain is on the floor. And this needs to be dealt with. We don't need the town looking like, "All right, you heard me."
That's it. Thanks for your view. Sean, anything, Sharon, anything, and later. Brian? Eric on the agenda? Eric on the agenda, okay. Everybody good then? Let's move to approve the agenda. So unless there are any changes or additions or corrections to it. I'm going to move the motion to approve the agenda. About a second. Motion by Lexi and a second by Carol to approve tonight's agenda as presented before you. Do we have any other questions, discussions, or requests of changes? Eric, now we'll call for a vote. All in favor of approving the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, say nay. All ayes for her. Motion carries, agenda approved. For seven is to approve the minutes from your 7/17 meeting. It's a regular meeting. That was in your packet and was provided here. So for per- did we have any other corrections, discussion? Did I spell names correctly?
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes for 7/17.
Jean's made the motion. Lexi is seconded to approve the minutes as we have in the packet from 7/17, 23, regular council meeting. Does anyone else have any discussion or questions related to this topic? If not, we will call for a vote. All in favor of approving the minutes from the regular 7/17, 23 meeting, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, say nay. All ayes. Motion carries, minutes approved. Payment claims, which is in green, in your packet. Michelle did these and she's not here to answer questions, but I think she's instructed Alex. Kelly probably knows some of these answers for, if you have any. But this is now the once a month. So that's why some of the amounts are larger than in the past. Because you are doing essentially a month's worth instead of just two weeks like you have been doing. Kelly, did you have to have the engineer come and look at that with the old hand for that radiation stuff? Is that why it was such a high 3,000? I mean, I think it's high, I don't know. I know he's an engineer, but...
Did they regret that? Is that what that's for?
Yeah, it's like the first sheet on the back, you see it. I mean, I know you're talking about the embra- but that's, I think it's fine, I don't know.
I'll find out what's going on.
I think there might have been two influences with that, yeah.
Oh, that maybe makes sense then. Maybe check that.
Yeah.
Did we get a refund from Wellmark who crossed the shield?
Oh, and the water, that's what I was asking about.
Right.
It's just kind of, it was put in the wrong spot and moved to where it's supposed to be in this area. It was to divide out.
Okay.
That'd be nice though.
Yeah, it'd be great.
Because you have a 2696 is under electric.
Okay, I see that.
Tell me what vector is again.
For safety.
That's once a year, in 1700?
I believe so, yeah.
Do they come out of where?
Everything.
Do they come out of Sheldon? Or where is vector coming from?
Yeah, they're out of the college, but...
That's what I thought. Okay.
Okay, thank you.
I'm going to make a motion to approve the claims for tonight.
I will second that. A motion by Jean and a second by Carol to approve payment of claims as reported tonight. Any other questions, clarification needed? Okay, then all in favor of approving payment of claims as presented this evening, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, say nay. All ayes. Motion carries, claims to be paid. Okay, Eric, it is your turn on this stage. Hardware, pocket park 2.0, whatever you want to call it. You have the council, you have the seat this packet, which included a sketch, a letter, and the Excel piece. So do you want to present or do you want to have them ask you questions? How do you want to do it?
Well, I first asked if you guys get a chance, if anyone wants a moment now to kind of look through the proposal. I guess I'd rather read the proposal or skim through it and see if we have any questions.
How much space is behind that fence? Doesn't really matter, I'm just curious.
You know, I don't know. Thousand per, I don't know, you know, pretty similar to us. That's like the sidewalk, basically. So I'd say 2,000 per feet back there.
I think it's kind of a neat idea.
I do too.
I'm just, I guess I'm wondering, do you want to do it like on a kind of a contract basis? So that, you know, say like in two years, you go, eh.
Yeah.
I mean, I think for us and for you maybe.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, I guess we'll open up, or I'll open this up with this kind of statement, kind of more on it here. At least what is, the initial things that we're looking for, you know, are kind of spurring this on in the business. One, we want to be in compliance with the sidewalk usage. We've always kind of just, you know, as our business has expanded and grown and we've tried to, you know, do a good job, you know, merchandising and growing business here in Paulina. We've really utilized our sidewalk and that front space, especially during garden center season. And we'd like to be in compliance, obviously, and kind of have that space to be a little bit safer and, you know, play ball with the city on what we're supposed to be doing there. And so, yeah, we're looking for more space to store mulch and product and that kind of stuff. And so, yeah, so we reached out to Brenda and kind of scratched around looking for, you know, what else can we do nearby for properties? What else can we do? We already kind of parked vehicles there as we're desperate, you know, to make room and find space and kind of shuffle around as you guys need us to. But then, yeah, talking to Brenda then about your guys' vision sort of for that pocket park space to be utilized more. Yeah, we are excited about the opportunity and if we could help make that happen and utilize some of our resources to, yeah, land state maintain and make that an active space. That's sort of, at least initially, you know, we were really looking for more space for our business. We're pretty constrained downtown. We're already sort of using that, I think, sidewalk space. We would like to help us to leave that, yeah, be able to grow our, especially the garden center because I think it would pair well with the pocket park.
Well, it would help you out. It would make it look nice and if we're going to continue the food trucks.
Yes, to do the benches and all that.
That would be a nice area for that too.
Yep. I think the patio lights, lawn games, if there's room yet for that.
Yeah, if there's room, I mean, if you go in this space, there's probably a room.
Are you planning on moving the fence down, Ray?
No, actually, our building.
That would cover all your stuff.
It will need to be...
Or moving it back?
It will, no, I would, I mean, I'd leave it where it is. There's already kind of landscaping there. It will need some maintenance. It does, I think, most of those, I think, are broken. A gate access factor could be beneficial if we're, you know, if we're rewatering up front and in the back. So some maintenance will be needed to do that. Yeah, certainly, you guys are sort of how we go about doing that. But the main thing we would need is water. All of this, you know, a lot of what I think we see ourselves use for that space for, with the, for garden center. You know, trees, tree inventory back there. And if we're going to landscape and add trees and lines there, obviously, we'll need water up there to make that work a little less difficult.
Do we have water that we can soak up there?
I'm sure there's one that was there before. We just have to find where it's cut off or whatever.
Find out, oh, yeah, okay. Yeah, that's what I'm saying, because that's going to be the main thing, that they can keep everything growing.
You know, if you can't find where that's at, we just have to go to the main.
Well, I think back in the day when the building was removed, I don't think the city had intentions of making it a park. We just had to make it look nice.
Right.
But why don't you just buy the property? Then you can do what you want with it.
Well, I did, that was one of the ideas floated. And if you guys had a number, you know, that would be easier for me to look at. I wouldn't say we're positioned right now to really go buying real estate. However, it could work out. Or that's, that was, I guess, my original question, you know, can we lease the space? But if the city wants to maintain it. The thing is, I don't know that we would have plans or resources to, right now, in the immediate future, to put a building there, you know, or do beyond kind of what we're already proposing to do just on the backside. We wouldn't have the resources to, you know, build, you know, fuse up the whole lot.
For your gardening, you know, for a gardening center, it'd be a perfect location.
Yeah.
And we have a lot of gardening products. Yeah, I guess I see that it wouldn't be necessary to put a building there if he wants outdoor storage for the garden products.
Right.
We just sell him that property and let him do what he wants with it. So he can have his outdoor garden. I know one person approached us, I don't know if that was about a garden center or a football greenhouse.
What price did you tell?
I think it was around 4,000, wasn't it?
I can't remember. I know we were approached.
We were approached by two different people because that one guy, one who built a locker there that one time.
Oh, that's right. You never...
No.
What are you wanting to do there? I mean, I guess I just ask, because as Chamber, we utilize that as well, as you know.
Yeah, and that's why, and I know the other side of that, I think the other side of that answer is, why I'm going to sell it, is maybe you guys, the city wants to maintain that for, you know, some of that stuff as well. You mean on the backside or on the front side?
Well, I guess for food trucks, we use that there. For fall festival, we use that, Easter. I guess we only did that one year.
Yeah. Say, to be honest, kind of the same thing, I think, is at least what our vision would be. You know, say that was the reference, that you want to use that via. I still think we would kind of stay with the same vision that we propose in this, you know, in this partnership. But yeah. Oh, yeah, there's a picture.
It's on the back.
Yeah, it's on the back.
Hand drone on a napkin. I think we would still kind of utilize the same. Obviously, we would maybe be a little heavier on merchandising, you know, or inventory. But, I mean, think of going to a garden center, you know, think of, yeah, there's tree inventory, you know, trees, trucks, that kind of stuff. Yet it's, you know, still a place you can sit, still a place you can, you know, have a food truck or have that kind of thing. I don't see ourselves as a business having as much energy to say, hey, let's get a food truck to come every week to our garden center. That would be great for a business, right, to try to draw business to us. I don't think we would have the energy to say, hey, let's make this food truck thing happen, you know.
But you can...
So I'm not opposed to either one, but I'm, yeah, but I could also, if it was 100% our, I... Yeah, I see us, I still have that same vision of this is what we want it to be. It's kind of community space as well as, you know, merchandising for our garden center inventory. And the backlot to be, you know, pallets of salt and mulch. And that, you know, gives us space for more logistical side of our business slash long-term tree storage essentially, you know, our garden center inventory again. The partnership side would be more allowing, yeah, Chamber Congress to say, this is still our space to have food better days, you know. That being said, we can do that, you know, in private, so give you guys access to do that, you know, privately, you know, all of this, but...
And I guess that would be up to the council.
But we're kind of open to ideas.
How much stuff would you have back there in the winter time?
It depends. We could probably fill it up, you know, or utilize half of it or something like that. I know snow storage is, not just you guys, but even us, you know, we, you know, that's a quick convenient spot for us to go throw some snow to. So that's, I know that's one of considerations. I don't know what you guys did before you used that a lot. But I think, yeah, I think some of it depends on, some of what we're going to talk about maybe next, if the trees, the old tree thing is on the agenda too, of sort of what kind of tree inventory we're going to get in this fall, you know, say, and then winter, some of that stuff. Because some of the bigger trees, you know, can actually cut over winter. And that would be kind of the spot we'd be looking to do that. But I don't see it needing, I don't see it needing that space much in the winter. I mean, I think we could, we could do that if there's no stock climbing area as well.
I think we need to talk about it, you know.
Basically, we're paying for all the stuff going in, so it would still be city property. Whether we want to do that and put that money out there, I don't know. I think the idea is a good idea.
I do too.
And I think it's also to be helpful for you. Not against any of that, but I guess we have to decide. It's really a good idea for everybody.
In one sense, we do this out at, you know, Mill Creek State Park. You know, we rent the old snack shack. And so we pay a little bit of new electricity out there and we have a pretty small, you know, we have to have a three-year contract with them out there, you know. In return, we get to kind of do whatever we want inside of that building. We're not changing, you know, anything on the outside of signage and that kind of stuff. And yeah, you take something that's just a shuttered, you know, building and at least give it some, you know, does bring business, you know, into town. A lot of people come to town, use us, and then it just, yeah, it kind of changes the appearance on. Now, I will say, at least small business, we are also limited to what we can, how much we can do and how much we want to do out there. I think sometimes we don't, you know, but this being right next to it. I see ourselves being able to utilize this and put more resources into this space as well, so...
Do you pay a fee then to the county for that?
We pay a small fee, yeah.
Okay. And then you put like your kayaks and all that stuff?
Yeah, and then we store our kayaks and that kind of stuff in that building.
Yep.
That's been a good partnership. But I see how that could work here, but I also, I do, I'm not opposed to the idea of, you know, purchasing as well. But with the idea that we would actually pretty much have the same commission that, you know, that's in this proposal, so...
Yeah, I think we need to talk about it.
I do too.
Have some good discussions and...
Yep.
I'm not, I think it's a great idea.
Any other questions?
Yeah, and I don't know, it'd be kind of nice, maybe, and to have some kind of a amount that this would run for the city. I don't, it's not like we've got a bunch of things that we'd be buying to put in there, but I think it would look nice.
We just spent, I just spent a week in Michigan, south of Michigan, a lot of breweries, a lot of the little towns that have done a lot, we've been going there the last 10 years than you've seen in the last five years. And a lot of cities doing this with empty lots, kind of utilizing for the same thing. It's not exactly restaurants, it's not exactly, you know, that businesses. There's adjacent businesses, you know, and the city will have like, you know, a band plays, you know, at that park or whatever. And you can see, yeah, you know, either gravel or paybirds, you know, some picnic tables and some shade and that kind of stuff. So I do think it's a great idea on, you know, say we had nothing to do with this and the city were going to just put resources into there. I mean, really do see value in that on that side, but we definitely are, you know, looking to help expand our business and give us some breathing room and storage and stuff too, so...
Well, I think that's, we just need to think about it, is that it?
Thank you, guys.
Yeah.
Thank you, Eric.
I kind of have dollars down and so I think that's good. I did remember that you had that already, what you do, so...
Yeah, and again, it's very rough, I don't know.
Yep.
I think, you know, I think in there, I don't have anything on gravel. I think it's in both the, you know, logos and other stuff. So I do have, if you do want more updated stuff, I could maybe give you better numbers too.
Okay, Eric will sit around for the next discussion, which is this application for the DNR Community Forestry Grant Matching Funds. So I believe, is this the one you're talking about?
Yes.
Yeah, like that you heard about. So this is one we found. So it's from the DNR and they are offering 75,000 gold dollars to almost all of the state. Because all but two counties have been impacted by the Emerald Ash work. So they are offering this and it's a matching fund. So whatever we put in, they will match from 500 to 5,000 if we get it. And it's reimbursable, so you have to put it out first. And it's allowed for planting on parks, school grounds, school grounds.
Um, and it's reimbursable, so you have to put it out first, and it's allowed for plant, planting on parks, school grounds, school grounds, other buildings, cemeteries, libraries, trails. Anyway, a lot of our property, and as you know, we're taking down ninety-some from those spaces, so this would give us a chance to possibly source them through Eric. You have to use local greenhouse providers, and he's offered some information on that. Do you want to talk more about that in general? Oh, the urgency is that this grant is due Wednesday, August twenty-third, and then you have to plant them this September through October, and you actually make a big community event out of it. We have volunteers, I love it, all of you here, uh, to help volunteer into the school, the chamber, residents, the committee, whoever else. And then a DNR person will inspect and watch and make sure, and then they want you to obviously take care of them going forward so that you don't just leave them dry and dry. So there's a lot tied into the application that, where we can't probably wait till the next meeting and then throw it together in a day and a half to put it together, but talks about what, what and why, how is a town minute affected by Emerald Ash War, and how will this help, and cost effectiveness, community involvement. It says that on the bottom there of thirteen, what your criteria are. So anyway, that's, we're just passing this on, and if you are interested in, Eric, you want to talk a little bit about trees of quantity size, kind of in general, what you would?
Yeah, first of all, I mean, you guys have, I think, as a city or position, I think, you know, be able to do this because you have identified, you know, you've done some light work and identified, really how much the revenue is and where you're at, and then we would love to kind of help with, as many resources we can to facilitate this. Challenge, some of the criteria on it, if you look in there, um, because it's grant money, because it's grant money, they obviously kind of, you know, have their stipulation, so one of the challenges is going to be a lot of diversity in species. So instead of like, you know, a garden center has their best sellers and we just sell a lot of those, one of the challenges is a very diverse and specific species list, um, but we have reached out, or we have just got kind of our fresh list of what's available this fall from, from a couple of our established nurseries that we have established relationships with, and I think we could, we could get a pretty good diversity. Um, so just to give you guys an idea, and I talked to Brenda a little bit about it today. So five thousand dollars, um, you know, what does that look like in trees? The smallest pot size available for this grant is a number five, which is like a three-gallon bucket, so that's a very, very small tree. So the trees we typically, kind of our smaller trees that we sell that are, you know, think of like a shade tree, are those ones that are in front of our business right now, if you, you'll notice them now when you walk by it, you know, but they're, they're not a, you know, they're about an inch, you know, trunk, they're smaller, but that, that's the number fifteen. So if you, but they are a somewhat more established tree. And then some of the trees, the other side of it, you know, the bigger size, two and a half, you know, inch and a half, two and a half inch trunk trees that are, um, we call that B and B, or Burlap, and they're a much bigger tree. So to give an idea of how many trees five thousand dollars would be, so say there's a fifteen-gallon or the, or the number fifteen pot, five thousand trees would be about thirty-three trees, five thousand dollars would be about thirty-three trees at a hundred and fifty dollars a tree, which is not much more than cost plus knowing the shipping cost. Typically, we'd sell that tree around two hundred dollars. But my estimate for the city, you know, saying maybe we can get a hundred and fifty dollars for that size of tree. So that's, you know, thirty-three trees at a hundred and fifty dollars or sixty-six or something about. And yeah, if you were to go with bigger, more established trees, um, you know, say about three hundred dollars per tree, um, some of the tree itself. Probably that's the number, but obviously it'd be a lot less trees, so I guess I'd recommend a mix. And then one of the other criteria is, is they prefer row bags and another thing called an air pot. Um, it's kind of a newer thing and a lot of nurseries don't have it, so I don't know that that's going to be, it just says preferred. I, I'll keep doing research and finding, but our growers, since they've tried them and don't really love them, just kind of stick with what is known, um, so I will continue to do research too and and see if there's another resource for, you know, making sure that we do everything we can to qualify for the grant money or if you award it to anybody.
Yes, there is a tree list that has, as he's mentioning, and we've given this to him, but some are prohibited, and part of it is, you know, they don't want to have everyone plant about the same tree or two, and then we have something like this happen where then all of them die at the same time. So by diversifying the shade trees, and they have some low-growing trees which are more designed for under power lines, um, and edible fruit trees and conifers, which are their categories, if anybody wants to knows that is here, but the diversity will be useful in hopefully extending the life of all our trees.
Have you seen the application? Is it quite extensive?
Yeah. Couple pages. And it's basically just little essay things and then the map of what you're doing and match. Uh, project narrative, provide a detailed summary timeline for most completion, people and organizations, goals, benefits, future use, and need professional assistance. You have to show ongoing care, how often we water and maintain for the first two years, and an ongoing plan for ten years after the project completion. Including who will be responsible and how often duties will be performed. So they're really obviously trying to take care of what they're doing, and not just saying go plant free trees, here you go. So you have to have your map, you have to have, if you're going to try to get your Tree City from the Arbor Day Foundation, you can proceed to try to get Tree City designation, which requires a few other steps, this would be like initial step.
But if we want to make this application work, we just about have to decide if we're going to approve it tonight.
You have to decide whether you even want to apply and then have one, one investment amount.
Who would be dealing with all that?
I heard.
Yeah, that got passed?
Yeah.
I noticed it says on here, it says only on public land, so.
Right. Yeah, parks, and so we're thinking, yeah, the park, the library, a local library, if a tree are not, and trails, street rights of way, and any other city property, if we need one out here, and any first spots. Swanson would technically count.
Do we have room to plant trees next to the parking?
Oh, I don't know.
Is there a right way on that?
Because we're on the ground on the sides, right?
How many feet are right, what do we have?
Right.
Enough to fill it, I don't know.
We need any in the park, I mean, I don't know, we're doing this whole, so.
Take down for here.
Yep.
Yeah, it's just looking at that, because the ballpark needed shade, that tree that came out, that was, that's now a seating area. Those kinds of spots, and it would be a matter of choosing what spots and what he recommends for trees, and what, we'd have to get very specific and know that by the twenty-third.
And hopefully they would be in by the future here.
Yeah, you have to do that. It just came out June twenty-third, so it's not like we've been sleeping on it a long time, but he mentioned it, and now we've found it. That's, that's where we're at.
And it looks like we have to match.
We provide all the funds, they would get ran first half.
Local funds match one dollar or two.
So we would only, so if we spend a pack of them, we would only get twenty-five bucks?
Correct. If, if that's all you want to put in, yeah, then you're good, but if we put in five, and then you ask them for five and put that, there's no guarantee you get five.
Right.
So you can spend ten thousand on trees, and I don't know, we might, I hope they can be a little bit, but that's that, if it doesn't really say. Guaranteed, they will tell you though by September eighth.
And when you start, you gotta go, September.
Yeah, and then you gotta start.
Oh, boy.
Eric has to get all those too, and know what they are and where they go, so it's, it's a lot, but.
I'm glad to get, know what I do, Frank, there.
Exactly. Air ground.
Well, you just about want to go around and see where we would want to put trees, first of all, to see if we get the dollars, you know, that's worth it.
So that's why I just asked him to kind of throw out some, throw some of that.
You could ride around, huh, now, where are the trees? You and the kids.
That, that's, I'm looking, again, clarifying where.
Could we put some, I don't know, obviously it's not anything yet, but could we put some like where they just boulders, all that, like, would that be considered?
That we were doing.
Well, that's what we do with it, you know.
The Johnson property?
Yeah.
The school is a property anymore.
Yeah, I know, but that name's, I don't change.
I don't want to be a fool.
He's Broadway.
What do you want us to call it? Maple Street?
City. City or not, me?
No, Barney's Broadway. But the city was as well, when they're about to make some changes to the apartment, so they were at one day if they would help out too, or if they had some spots, so it's just a matter of trying to figure it out fast, because there's not much time. And yeah, hopefully they would do it again next year, but, you know.
We don't know.
We don't know.
We don't know.
Seventy-five thousand total for all counties and all of Iowa, so.
I wonder if a lot of these cities are doing it because they're putting a lot of company, you know.
Well, yeah.
In that world where we start getting, we can't put.
Unless we choose to do so and choose to change the plan.
Well, that's why I said we need to see where we would put them, and what, what we're looking at.
And in the park, you know what the trees that winter, because you kind of talked about picking the pickleball court.
Right, right, so you don't do that. There's enough shade there yet.
How many ash trees do we have in the city park there? There's three there, they're going to come down.
And there's, what, a few dead trees up at the Swanson property?
Any ash ones there?
Is there any up there?
I don't think there are.
Yeah, I didn't see any dead up there.
I heard any. He just watches out the other ones. I don't know about the school. There's anything there. I don't want to paint anything there, if they're going to be remodel, we can, depending on where they want.
Yeah, someone like Bulburg that was cut down.
There you go. A couple there.
But they're not ash, are they? I don't hear that kind of tree things.
You see, that's a tree there.
They take some down.
And didn't you say there's certain kinds we can get?
Yes.
There's quite, there's quite. Oh, that's right, you had that before.
There's so many.
Yep.
Just right, so. Fifteen, you can't.
Yeah, well, I think that's the only way we go is to find out what we're looking at, and see if it's worth doing your actual grant, fill it up. So that we know if we would get the money, where are we going to go with it? We don't just want to go.
You almost have to know that before you.
That's right.
Apply for your grant.
That's what I said, we need to figure out what we're looking at.
Where and what, and what.
Yeah, so that we.
I mean, we're already behind it.
Yeah, so we, but, and then we just about have to make a special meeting to okay it then.
Three weeks to.
Yep.
Get the grants.
And then you get the grant going.
And then we gotta, then we gotta decide what, what amount of locals' monies we have to put into it.
Well, you won't know that until you get it, right?
No, you, you were basically committing to spend X dollars and then hoping then you could get your rebate, would be half of that back.
Yeah, that's the way I understand it.
Okay.
So you're putting it out upfront, and by that October, when they award you September eighth or whatever it is, then they'll tell you whether you've got any back. So you have to be committed to spending potentially all of it and getting nothing, I assume. I can't imagine whether you have these five hundred bucks, but if everybody applies, then. I think that's what it would.
Well, it says here five hundred, five thousand dollars. And it's a one-to-one match.
So you could just, yeah, spend a thousand dollars or something small.
It says here landscape-sized trees, so I don't know, but that's, the small ones cost by landscape size?
Well, I, I don't know if they're, if that.
Says it starts at that number five, our pot.
Yeah. Oh, that's what it says.
Yeah, they don't want you to start it from seed, basically.
Yeah, or like really like a little sea laker.
Number five, hard pot, airproof container, or grow bag, or ball of earth trees.
So the grants are reimbursable, so that means you have to spend the money first.
Yeah.
Yep.
And then they match, then they match it.
I think it's kind of like a short bit of time, and like budget while you're working coming out. They would send it back, request reimbursement by Friday, December fifteenth, and then they would pay you after that, so you have that much time after just to have that.
I think it's too, um, really short of a time.
And get no dollars.
Too bad we didn't know about it.
Right, that's why you'd be risky to do the whole, you know, for five thousand and or ten thousand worth of trees, you'd be, you may have to pay for ten thousand, so you should pick something less than that, but that's the max.
I think for the small impact, our tree, because they're, they're on the right way, they're other species, so.
You purchase the trees.
Yeah, I mean, we could purchase the trees with local monies and don't worry about the grant. Next year, we could budget for more.
Yes. I kind of think so too.
Because we're kind of.
We gotta, we gotta go with it, if we do it.
And you don't have that on, on public land.
Says twenty-twenty-two. Top one.
But the date, oh.
That's the resilience grant, yeah. It's the twenty-three, over, it's the twenty-three, that's. Application must be received earlier than four-thirty Wednesday, August twenty-third, twenty-twenty-three. Uh, must be a tight one. I'd say about the twenty.
Yeah, I think too. Let's watch what the other towns do, and how they, if they get them, some of them.
Good. Venus Tree, questions asked by resident expert there.
Not going for the grant money, you do get, I mean, you could pick whatever grade you want, pick whatever size you want, you know what I mean?
Right, do whatever.
Grant money gives you a little more flexibility, obviously.
You should still be provided, but you could.
Right, but we can thank them by some of that.
And we, and we do a, a money thing, more than twenty dollars, or if someone buys a tree.
Oh, right, they get half.
The, the city, the city gives you.
Isn't that half yet, fifty percent?
Uh, I think it's something between twenty dollars and something.
Oh, really? Was it half of twenty? I can't remember.
Something like that.
It could be.
And that's what it, you know, it's a muscle.
Right. Okay, any other questions for Eric? I'm hoping all the rest of the waters, I think we have enough trees killed in this pack, getting rid of that, while we're talking about trees. I think it seems ironic to do that. Uh, okay, Nicole, consider the Chamber's plans for Fall Festival, October events, and approved street closures request. That is also probably, that's the next step, but she'll talk about what she wants to do.
Sorry, I didn't have anything to print out, because Eric was doing an update, so um, we are getting to the time where it's Fall Festival, so we are planning on doing that October twenty-eighth. Um, we are starting out with our Monster Dash Five K Fun Run and Walk. That'll start at nine o'clock in the morning, we'll start at the city park like what we did last year. We'll go out to the lake, back around, and then back to, um, the city park. I've already got the approval from the Orion Conservation to go on, you know, the, um, the lake back there and, and everything, I figured I probably need to get that approval. Um, then in the afternoon, we will have our trunk or treat from three-thirty until six-thirty. That includes, again, the trunk or tree.
What time was it, I'm sorry?
Three-thirty to six-thirty. Then we will have the trunk or tree games, food trucks, kind of exactly what we've had in, in the past. Um, we are asking for the street closures, the same as before, we're wanting, um, on Broadway Street from Mickley into Main, and then, so kind of right in front of our, my office there, and then this street down here from, um, Broadway, just to the past of the city building, um, because we keep on adding more and more trunks, and, which is a great thing to have, um, we just need to make sure that we have adequate space for, so they're not all, all bunched together. Um, again, it's going to be the same as what we have had in the, the last two years, I think we've had these two streets blocked off. Um, that way we don't have, um, you know, a conflict with the grocery store, you know, the restaurants and all of that. Because we did kind of run into that the first couple of years that we did that, no one was able to park there, and we want to make sure, you know, that they, they have their, their people, their patrons coming in too. Um, we will also, um, just asking if we could have the garbages emptied, um. I guess we really only have one over here. I don't know, is there a way that we can get permanent garbage over on Broadway Street in front of? Like, Eric, you don't have a, a garbage can there, do you? Yep, and then over on that side, I don't know for sure if that is even something that is doable, or if that's, I guess the city would have to, don't they, don't you guys empty the, the garbage cans?
Yeah, I think we just got one main.
Would you use your pocket park for the food trucks?
Uh, I usually just bring one of my own.
Not buying one there.
Just throwing that out there. I mean, it doesn't have to be right now, but it, it is kind of nice to have something permanent there, I mean, just because people, you know, walk, and if we're trying to utilize the pocket park more, which would be great, I think a, a permanent fix. I think a, a permanent fixture would be, would be nice to have.
Yep. Regardless.
Um, and then, um, we will be also having, um, a local kettle corn. And, um, there was a couple other people who had wanted to sell, like, their baked goods and, and all of that. I do have a question because I know with the food vendor, um, and. Application and, and all of that, would these people need to have a permit, like, a food truck?
To sell, like, kettle corns?
Yeah, yeah. Because they're not, not a food truck, you know, they're just an independent.
Do you have anything like that at the, um, city park, like, did anybody come, like, with the kettle corns?
We did, we did for Jamboree, we did have, um, have, it would be the same person, Jeremy Roar.
Yep.
I can't remember what his, um, what his name was or, like, the, the business name. But, um, I just want to make sure that we kind of cross our Ts and dot our Is for anything that we're going to be having down, downtown.
If he didn't fill one of the.
He didn't because, you know, we're kind of up in the air with what we're doing with, with the permit and everything. Um, so I just kind of want to get, and I know we, you guys have that on the agenda tonight of going over the food pit. Food truck permit and everything, just kind of want to get a jump on it before.
I thought there was an exemption for food things when there was a festival.
Yes, we, we did think that, but again, it's, it's up in the air, so I guess we're not really getting full clarification on that. So that's going to be up to the council if that is how you're going to go forward, if we do have events, if, if that is an exemption. And if it's just those extra times, like our food truck Mondays, if that is when we need to have, you know, this permit going forward. I'm not for sure. That's up to you guys. But yes, Mary, before it was always an exemption, but I think we kind of, or you guys wanted to revisit that a little bit more.
I feel like there's already, like, something going on. I feel like it should ever be okay.
So like one of our, we'll have, um, Fall Festival and then Hometown Christmas, you know, we'll have people. Usually Hometown Christmas, since it's cold, a lot of food trucks, you know, people don't want to be outside. Um, but that's not to say that one person might not want to do that down the road. But yeah, I just wanted to kind of go over what we're planning on doing for Fall Festival to keep you all in the know and, and everything. And I mean, you can get back to me, we have until the, the end of, of October. But I would like to have something to give to our, our food trucks and any other type of vendors. Probably by the end of September, just so they have adequate time to prepare.
You won't do anything in the park, other than you'll start your fundraiser there maybe?
Yep.
And what time was that going to start?
That's going to be nine o'clock. And then as far as the street closures, um, since we are starting at three thirty, um, just to make sure that we have, like, no vehicles there. Probably around one o'clock, one thirty, we would like to get the barricades up. Um, usually it has been about a couple of hours before, just to make sure that we can, you know, there's no, nobody there. No vehicles and everything. Um, the Legion is going to be doing a, a Halloween dance. So we wanted to for sure quit by seven o'clock or make sure barricades and everything is cleaned up by seven o'clock. Just because we want everybody to be able to go out there and then enjoy, um, the fundraiser that they have. So one o'clock until seven o'clock is when we would have those streets closed down.
Any questions for Nicole?
So the street closure would be from, on Broadway, from Mickley to Main.
Yep.
And then on Main, from Broadway to Cross.
Yep, yep. Well, kind of like Kate cornered that off with some barricades. Do you, were you down last year for that? It was, so that way there was still traffic that could go, um, to the west.
With the bank to work my students.
Yeah.
Just cut off in an angle.
Yes. Yep, that way we have an entrance for people to come down for trunk or treat. Um, and again, so there's people who can, um, can drive, you know, so they can go get their groceries and food and whatnot.
Are you doing food vendors, did you say, or just got here?
We will, we will have two, um, two food trucks. Um, last year we brought in probably close to seven hundred and fifty people, um, in Palina. So, you know, I have talked to Rich and, you know, Chris and those guys, they, they were swamped. You know, I guess with, with Rich, he just had a, a special, he didn't have his, um, kitchen going. Um, but then with, um, uh, JW's, I mean, they were, they were swamped, which is a great thing. We want that to happen too. But to be able to accommodate the people that we are coming, bringing in for this. Um, one to two food vendors is, is usually what we would like to do or what we've had in the past. And it's been, they usually sold out themselves.
I see that, that, I guess technically we do need a resolution to approve the street closures. Can't take any, have the resolution there if you do have any questions related to the street closure. It would not have to be done tonight, but it could be and be done since it's the same, so it is written there and she's filling in the times approximately one to seven. It was on your spot.
Well, I think we just want to do it and have it.
Yeah. I'll make the resolution. Make the most of it.
Yes.
I will second that. Here on the second resolution. To close the streets in the Business District for Palina's annual Fall Festival trunk or treat event. Be resolved, council, the city of Palina, Iowa to approve closing downtown streets noted below for a few hours in the afternoon from one to seven P M. On Saturday, ten twenty-eight, twenty-three, East Broadway from Main to Mickley, South Main from Broadway to City Hall. An intersection will be half open on the northwest corner to allow traffic flow to North Main businesses. Is that all, what everyone agrees to? And then we'll get back to about that kettle corn.
Perfect. And then exemptions and all of that.
Great. We call for rule call vote on a resolution. Um, Steve Haren.
Aye.
Uh, Carol Hongkopp.
Aye.
Jay Jones.
Aye.
Lexi Murphy.
Aye.
Gina Grau.
Aye.
Eyes of zero days. Resolution passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. You're welcome. For the food truck discussion, too.
I am.
Okay, so we're to number twelve, which is in this packet and you've seen in the past. That is amending because. Do you guys have any questions on this stuff that we changed? We've had it for a while, we look fine with it. Good to me.
I think it looked fine. I think we kind of got what needs to be done. But it's not like if something comes up later, we can amend it.
Yeah. So yes, this would be the first reading of this amendment. So it will not be passed full week. You can neck the next meeting week, the third, but I think we should have.
I think the, I think the three, yeah.
Yes. It needs to go out.
Wait until people know what we see it.
Do we know what?
Curtis.
Yes, at least it's now first reading. So if I, it's up to you whether you want someone, like, seeing it aloud or anything, the whole thing. Someone can just summarize it, use their motion.
Basically, we just up the ticket, so your first offense in one year is a hundred, second is two hundred, three is five hundred. And we get a simple misdemeanor all in one year. Um, if your dog does kill stuff, I guess other animal or bite something, then you have three days to get it out. If you don't, then they have to apply for a simple misdemeanor warrant and go get that and we can go in the house and get the dog out.
Yep.
So it's more of a forcing to get animals out of there. And then we took out all, um. We took out, we had a pit bull and tier, like, in any mix like that, we did take that out and we put all, all dogs go under, basically all animals, so.
And that's what it should be.
So.
I agree.
Yep, I think that's good. And I think you also got the, if they ever stay in the property, they have to be.
On a lease.
They have to be on a lease or some kind of a court or something. But I think that needs to be done. So.
Yep. I think it looks pretty good. Understands all those points. Protection of all people and all pets.
Yep.
Okay, so who wants to make, uh, official motion to introduce this ordinance?
I will introduce an ordinance amending the code of ordinances of the city of Palina, Iowa by amending provisions pertaining to animal control and protection.
So we have a motion by Jean and a second by Lexi to introduce the ordinance amending the code of ordinances, which is related to animal control and protection. As noted in the various sections that have been modified. Do we have any other discussion or questions related to these actions? And this is the first reading of this ordinance, amended ordinance. Okay, hearing none, we can call for rule call vote. Steve Haren.
Aye.
Carol Hongkopp.
Aye.
Jay Jones.
Aye.
Lexi Murphy.
Aye.
Gina Grau.
Aye.
J five eyes, her makes, reading number one of this ordinance, which we will honor is. Same thing here for animal control to add the ability to have five, maximum of five chickens. With rules as noted here in the chickens clause, about kept twenty-five feet from neighboring residences. Must be secure in a hen house during non-maylight hours, must be kept in a closer fences all times. You can't smell it outside your property. Storage, the order of manure must be fully enclosed, no more than three cubic feet of manure, however much that is. Uh, shall be stored on the owner's property, noise from chickens can't be loud enough to be heard by others, chickens can't run at large. And anyone that kills a run, an ant, a chicken running at large, any animal, as in a dog, that would kill a chicken running at large is not qualified after the vicious animal response. Uh, it's unlawful to keep it inside the house, slaughter them, or keep them on a vacant lot. We're unattested. So this is your chance.
And we've had nothing, is this an amendment?
This is an amendment because it previously said no.
We didn't say it.
We've talked about it, but we didn't.
We never put in a motion. You could have twenty.
So, so May's going to be the chicken booth now?
Just got fun dogs, chickens.
I think it's chickens.
We're going to do goats and chickens.
Next, we're going to go to.
Jungle.
Yep, we're going to have farms up here.
Move up to the farm.
Five chickens. Well, Eric does sell chickens, so you have to let us know who buys chickens.
You have five limits.
You tell them, each one of you.
The deal, they're already out there, whether we sold them. We sold them, or whether you guys did that, the chickens are there. You have something, the point I'd say, you're the rules.
Yep, there you go. You want a copy of this in the store?
Yeah, I would.
You know what, probably wouldn't be bad.
Yeah.
Because then you got something to say, yes.
I have one feeling about this is.
Huh?
You're making a chance for neighbors to not like each other. Because you're letting them, you know, look at that one over here, they had chickens and they look like a barn yard. You know, and how would you like to put it next to that with the flies and smell? And you don't want to be a neighbor and not, you know, complain about it, but.
Well, that's need twenty-five feet, I don't know how far that one was from a neighbor.
I don't know, but it, it had a smell.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Can't be near restaurant yard. Yep.
That, that, that leaves a lot, uh, very, you'd have that a big lot because your houses are twelve feet apart, probably twelve or fourteen feet apart. So they'd have to be sitting right in the middle of your house in the backyard. But I've seen people with very good chicken food, you know, so.
Other than a giggle and Tom and have chickens.
I don't think anyone would raise their hand right now, because, you know.
I'm sure they.
Yeah, let's just go with that.
Yes, yes, yes. And they always have.
Okay.
Can we get that chicken food?
I, I will gladly, I will gladly, oh, stay with it, you know, whatever it is.
I think you should.
I would, I would love to have something clear and concise that says, yeah, here's what you can, keep it out.
Okay, because this tells you everything. How far, where to have it.
My suggestion, always, always, just be a good neighbor, here's the deal, you know.
Right.
Make sure you're a good neighbor.
Yeah.
It is often, it's not, it's not doing me.
I think in the. Oh, I'm looking at the, uh, manure part of the.
Stored manure?
No more than three cubic feet of manure shall be stored on owner's property.
How much is that?
Three cubic feet.
Three by three.
Oh, okay.
So the, this long, this wide, I just thought.
On the yard.
On the yard. It's about a couple of scoops, more than a couple of scoops.
I think that's a lot.
That's a lot.
Somebody had that amount of dog manure on their property.
So while that's what I'm getting at.
Yeah.
More than one.
The dog ordinance, I think, in a kennel, says it has to be cleaned up daily.
I would hope so.
But that has to be the same.
That's a lot of, you think about that, that's a lot of manure, that's, you know.
Yeah, I didn't see that, but that's.
And, and, oh, it's great in the garden, but it's, it stinks so bad.
Yes. That's why. We've, we've got chickens at home on a farm, why would you want them in town?
I, I would say I have a long point.
Do people just get egg laying bins, is that it? Or they get broilers that?
No, in town, people are not getting broilers. People are getting layers.
Layers.
What do they do with them in the winter, bring them in the garage?
In a heat lamp.
Yeah.
I mean, we recommend that they.
You see what happens with a heat lamp or whatever you hear?
Their, their productivity goes down, but a chicken is going to provide our energy.
My neighbor put them in the garage.
I don't know what they'll do.
Good way to burn dogs at home.
Yep.
Heat lamps are.
So are we taking that three cubic feet to like one? One?
Oh, I think that should be.
I should be, to be kept.
Daily.
It does say it's supposed to be in a fully enclosed structure with a roof, so I guess if you had it covered up and it just smelled really bad. It'd be a big Spanish.
Open up a door, a plug, thousands of flies come out of it, yes.
All right, but you might smell that it's three cubic feet.
It would. That's a lot.
That is a lot of manure.
It'd take a while for five chickens to do that.
Yeah.
I mean, I just think they have that out there that we require, uh, dog kennels cleaned up daily and then we're going to mist handle anyway in here. We either change the, the dog ordinance or we change this.
Let's change this.
I was going to say, let's do that dog ordinance alone.
Even if you would, if you would have much manure, learning orders from them would be perceptible beyond the boundaries of progress. So in a way, you kill it with that one too. You kind of contradicts the case right there.
Yeah, it might be able to take care of it that way.
Unless somebody's chicken's manure doesn't smell. Is that a specialty hybrid you could get in there?
I don't think you have to worry that it isn't going to smell. Like you said, it'd take a lot to buy chickens to make this better.
I'm going to say, let's change the three cubic feet to daily. Or at least.
Well, this is.
Or every, or every other day.
This is for storage. This is a clean up, this, this is storage.
Sort of manure must be fully covered.
They need to be out every day.
We know.
I, well, I think the idea of going storage is, is some of them might clean out their chicken coop, but where are they, because they want to use it in the garden.
Yes, that's what they're doing.
Don't they just keep it in there?
I don't know.
You might put it in the garden.
You put it in the garden.
But the idea is that they would, but they might stockpile it and, no, you can't stockpile it for very long. And so I think clarifying definitely not daily doesn't, I think there are any other, I think it's a storage aspect.
Yeah, that we can't store.
Chicken manure presents ammonia really, really bad. And that's why it's such good fertilizer for gardens or anything, it's because the ammonia, you know, the farmers, they buy ammonia and put it on their crops. Well, all that food put chicken manure on it, they got the same thing.
Yep, and we do.
Yeah.
I think these people, these chickens should build a cage around their garden.
There, yeah.
That's what I told him, so. That's what I told him, so then they eat the bugs, do whatever.
It's not any different than compost box, is it?
Kind of the same.
Well, yeah, kind of the same thing.
Compost doesn't usually stink though. Cast ball would be using their compost.
Right.
So what are we gonna do? So yes, are you going to remove now it's two lines, um, all stored manure must be covered, no more than three cubic feet, are you gonna adjust it? What do you?
I want one cubic. That's a five gallon bucket probably.
So they can store of, like you're saying, the five gallon bucket of manure?
In the way it's worded now, that would be like a three, a three five gallon bucket.
Right.
You gonna change the one cubic foot down or what?
Probably not. I wanna know what, how we're gonna take care of the noise.
As long as you're changing stuff, the paragraph below it, you better change, change that too. An uninhabited.
First of all, how's, they can't have a rooster.
It's not an uninhabited task.
No task, yes.
So are we gonna approve this tonight or are you gonna revise it and bring it back?
I think we would revise.
Revise it.
Revise it and bring it back?
Yeah, so the question, the request for revision is to remove the stored manure in a fully enclosed structure, keep that and only change it to one cubic foot. Are we just changing the one cubic foot from three to one, or is the other line?
One cubic yard is twenty-seven cubic feet.
One cubic foot.
Right.
Yeah.
One cubic foot is up to twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven cubic.
It'd be, it'd be twelve by twelve by twelve, a cubic. One cubic.
Put that in there.
Cubic.
To one cubic.
Yeah.
That's like a five gallon bucket, that would be more better.
Should we measure that so that, say that, so that people are understanding of what the amount is?
Yes, probably.
Yeah, there you go.
Cause some of them.
Our one five gallon bucket.
Okay.
Well, you could put, uh, you could put in parentheses, um, for example, R E one five gallon.
Yeah, there you go.
Right, I think so too, put in parentheses relative.
One.
Okay. That plan, yes, any other revisions? Twenty-five feet, the run at large, gotta must be down hills. We keep that down to one cubic, that should help with the, any old.
Do we wanna put a time on it, that it has to be disposed of with a certain amount of time? Or they're gonna put it in their five gallon bucket and leave it sit there six months?
Or six months, yeah, and then I will say. Is it, is it, does it have to be enclosed or is it open? Then if it's enclosed, I don't know.
They want the weather to sustain, they want their grass to sustain.
Yeah.
They want their own. No mess out.
Knocked out.
Give a little water there, they'll behave.
All right, any other direction, no storing, not storing it. Accumulating one cubic, one gallon, one five gallon bucket. Shall be stored in owner's property under a fully enclosed, in a fully enclosed structure with a roof that's not your house, do we need to stress by that?
I would hope not.
Whatever it is.
I would think, I'm a.
Yeah, I would, that should take care of that, that's not take care of that. We don't know how much. Yeah, so basically you're just changing that one area?
Okay. All right. Uh, do we have a motion to make that revision to that? Let's just make the motion to revise the ordinance.
I'll make a motion to, um, amend the ordinance to no more than one cubic feet of manure shall be stored in the owner's property.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Steve and a second by Jean to revise this amended ordinance regarding chickens in the city limit. To change the wording to no more than one cubic foot of manure shall be stored on the owner's property. Does anyone else have any questions related to this? Are you adding the one, one five gallon bucket in parentheses or not?
Yeah, that doesn't have to be in the motion.
Correctly, correctly.
Yeah, this is just the amendment we're going on.
Good. So then all in favor of adjusting this amendment, say aye.
Aye.
And a vote say nay. All ayes, motion carries, and we'll have that for you within the next. Uh, yeah, put this to structural weeds.
We could, we could approve that, I mean, we could approve the ordinance with that amendment if we wanted to do so. And then it's done.
Yeah, there you go. Hard change.
Good idea.
Okay. Then we'll have to bring it up again. Would you like to introduce the amended ordinance with an amendment as you just made your motion?
I'll, I'll, uh-huh, I'll present the resolution to, um, resolution to present the, uh, ordinance amending the code of ordinances of the city, fully not by amending the provisions pertaining to animal control and protection.
With the correction.
With the amendment, yeah.
Okay. Okay, so now we have a resolution introduction by Steve and Lexi, so I did this, this is the first reading of course of this, and do we have any questions or clarification needed? So, oh, roll call.
Steve Hare.
Aye.
Carol Hongko.
Aye.
Jay Jones.
Aye.
Lexi Murphy.
Aye.
Gina Rowe.
Five ayes, six nays, first reading of this amended ordinance, further amended, passes. Okay, thank you for that. So next is weeds, which for some reason, I'm copying, you didn't notice that we have the previous version of weeds in their packet, so if you do have the one that has the number in it, that was the one we were supposed to be having. About that, um, so it should say eight inches, not have dates, and yes, as you brought up, there are plenty who are over that, yes. So weeds, grasses, or other growth shall not be allowed to grow to a height greater than eight inches on the average. This provision shall not apply to prairies, wetlands, or somewhere. There is a naturalized perennial vegetation which are certified by an enforcement officer should not constitute a nuisance. In the event of failure to comply, this vehicle shall enter the property and destroy said weeds or other growth at the property owner's expense, which is the same as our nuisance abatement, I'll assess. When the rest of the nuisance abatement will apply, this is the only change.
So like we would go and cut them down and then send them a bill, like we do first snowing and, snowing and all that?
All right.
I will introduce the ordinance amending the code of ordinances of the city of Polina, Iowa by amending provisions pertaining to destruction of weeds.
I'll second. Okay, she was introduced to the amended ordinance, and Lexi has seconded to, uh, basically to amend the section six, destruction of weeds, which constitutes health, safety, or fire hazard of greater than eight inches on average, or the city shall handle and handle accordingly. Uh, do we have any other questions or clarification related to this revision? Okay, we'll call for roll call vote.
Steve Hare.
Aye.
Carol Hongko.
Aye.
Jay Jones.
Aye.
Lexi Murphy.
Aye.
Gina Rowe.
Five ayes, six nays, first reading of the amended ordinance passes. Thank you. Since we're on roll, let's get to that peddler's solicitor's and transient merchants ordinance. So as you'll see, this is revised, there are three different types of, that this applies to, which is part of why the food truck permit was not as effective, because it was trying to be the same as the guy who sells encyclopedias store to door as a food truck, as the fireworks stand. You know, so they're all very different and should have their own specific categories, which is what she tried to delineate in here. So we've only had the food truck permit later in the next, um, line of business, but this does talk about conducting during daylight hours. Obviously you don't want people knocking on your door at night, trying to sell you things at midnight. Most of you don't probably, and I guess. Seven day period. Again, this is more of the peddler's solicitor's, it's not so much pertaining, although food trucks now falls into that category as a transient merchant, it is not as directly read the transient merchant. It's not quite that either. So it's a little messy, but hopefully this makes it a little more clear. And we've talked about the bond in four oh six, the law required, which from what I have been told by various parties, that is already required if they have filed with the state or have done, are legitimate as a business with the state, they have already done that, so we should not need to ask them to do anything extra. It's simply a matter of if they are an official business with the state, that has been per the Iowa code nine C E nine point four, the law required.
Four point oh six is just asking for evidence that the person has filed a bond with the state.
Right, but if they've already, they're filling out more records, then we ask for the license, the, the business license and sales tax, retail sales tax used in this case for food trucks, that has, they've already done that. So that would be approved, you shouldn't have to ask for more proof, that's where people were getting confused, I think a lot is they didn't know, they, it's not another piece of paper that they have that says that, it's just part of when they register with the state. So I'll take care of it. For the state and the Sulan Food, that's, okay, the Sulan Food District, whatever it is, helps department handles and keeps track of all of that, even down to the who's working and when, and they have to log all of those details, so. That is all material you can get if you need that information, it's not that we would need to ask for it in addition to the state. Cause they're already taken care of. Okay.
And did you change anything in that four point oh eight, the exemptions?
No, it's just reading through it, there's nothing in there. Okay. And that's just so you can get your Girl Scout cookies, you can get your FFA approved, there's still the farm, uh, farmers markets or them from this school or something, you have a milkman delivery or something like that, you could take that. Swan man, essentially, Swan man. Yeah, and then like the office supply people who come south or to businesses, those are all, I don't need to file every time.
Under the registration requirements or following form, is it legal to ask them for their driver's license number and vehicle description?
According to Tisha, yes. That is where, that, that would be more for the person driving through town and stopping in multiple places, you would want to know where that person came from rather than a food truck that exists in one location. So that is, she's, Tisha believes we should have a separate, uh, form for the transient, the peddler, which is that is a solicitor, I mean, sorry, my words right now, peddler's solicitors and transient merchants, so that each one really needs its own specific registration, and that would be where it pertains more to that. Okay.
So the peddler's is not.
The ordinance covers all three in a group, cause that's how it was made, but the forms that you would approve to have them fill out then can specify the differences, as long as it doesn't directly add something that you haven't added. So like if we didn't have this in, then you can't ask someone on a solicitor's permit or peddler to provide it. That's your mind, I understand. But this way we can. To which I, I know, I think some of you saw there was a gentleman in crime guard today that had that last year, had him take down all the stuff, remember the picture and all that material, because he was someone dropped from here, not local to the area. Which is not really what we're doing so much with the food trucks.
Okay, Ben just handed me up from the Bryan House Sheriff's Office. Community awareness, did you get that?
Yes, that's what I was referring to, that guy.
Okay.
So.
So he's okay? He may have the sheriff's demo.
Yeah, and he wants to go around, I see him too.
He was in the.
But doesn't say what he's driving.
Okay.
Which that would be community awareness.
Sure.
Oh, I didn't say what he was trying to tell you.
Or his license number.
Doesn't mean he didn't take them, just didn't share it.
Oh, yeah. Why not, why do we need it?
Well, the only reason I get license numbers for my environment is to make sure they're eligible for insurance cover, otherwise I don't care.
Sure.
I need to know it's valid, if it's valid, great.
Right.
I.
Okay, so like Jehovah's Witnesses, did they need to come to the city office and?
No, they're not selling.
They're just asking for donations.
They're not selling.
They're not soliciting. So you're saying either one and two is okay, and three, you don't, yeah, you don't want the vehicle description or a license number, so should we strike one and three?
I'm.
That's okay, you, you have a unique perspective, as an employer and such, so.
All right, if they're driving a white van that says candy all over it, yes, that would be red flag.
Unless they're selling candy.
Yeah. So.
Put ones again, Earl. Both of those have same vehicle or license number as on one and three, uh, number two says the employer and employer's address, the nature of the business, and length of time such business will be carried, which is typically what you have on our permit, you had to fill out.
I would think that would.
So that seems.
Could we strike one and three then?
Yes, even the politicians need to have something on file here, by the way.
We always.
Or on I, yes. Where's that, where's that one, all sources stop by.
Okay.
And it can submit in writing the name, the purpose of their cause, names and addresses of officers, and the period which activity, so you just have to know that people are around, so I guess when someone calls you.
Just be aware.
Yes, and so, if something happens, we'll have some reference. Okay, does anyone have any other requested revisions to this amended ordinance related to peddler's solicitors and transient merchants other than striking four oh four, item one and three?
I'm gonna do the same like we did on the chicken one.
Yes.
I'll introduce an ordinance amending the code of ordinances of the city of Polina, Iowa by amending provisions pertaining to peddlers, solicitors, and transient merchants with the request of revisions.
You should make a, you should make a motion to re, remove those items first, so we can put them out.
Is that necessary?
I think that's been reviewed for this new one now, is it, this new resolution?
Yeah, bottom you have number one and then the top the two and three. That's where we're taking that one and the three.
Yeah, you need to make a motion to remove those.
First.
Those first.
Do I have to make a motion? That's what we.
You need to make a motion to amend this.
I'll, I'll make a motion, so, all right, who wants to do that?
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
To remove from. To remove from the ordinance section four point oh four, we're gonna strike the first, what, line one?
One and three.
One, strike lines one and three.
I'll fight them out. All right, the motion by Gina, second by Lexi, to revise the presented amended ordinance by removing lines one and three under section four point oh four. Anyone else have any revisions, comments, confusion on that statement? Mary Nutt will call for a vote on that, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Not opposed, say nay. You're all ayes, motion carries now, should I tell people again or someone else say?
Sure. I'll introduce an ordinance amending the code of ordinances of the city of Palina, Iowa, by amending provisions pertaining to peddlers, solicitors, and transient merchants with the striking of lines one and two, or one and three, under section four point zero four.
Lexi, that's you, okay, so Gina's introduced, and Lexi has seconded for the first reading of the amended ordinance related to peddler solicitors and transient merchants, we're rising four point oh four by removing item one and item three. That's previously motion that approved. Any other discussion? Or we'll call for a roll call vote?
Steve Heron.
Aye.
Carol Lonco.
Aye.
Jay Jones.
Aye.
Lexi Murphy, aye. Gina Nunn.
Aye.
Hi, nice. Sarah, nice. First reading of amended ordinance approved. Thank you for bearing with us on that one. Okay. We are to item sixteen, resolution to approve the amended mobile food vendor permit form. And again, this was something that is not tied to the ordinance, so this is something that sounds like a lot of you didn't know we had or what it said. So we thought it would be better to have you weigh in and have approval of it, so you know what's being asked of everyone when Nicole and the chamber reach out to food trucks and so that when Jason and Chris come back, they are happier than last time. So basically, the front doesn't say much different, um, it's just kind of that basic. Because the back is where you'll see the checklist is reduced down to three items, the mobile food unit license, which is required by dial, the retail sales tax permit, and the proof of general liability. And the amounts are now one thousand, which is apparently more of a base standard business amount. Ours was two, all others seem to be one. And then it talks about not facing the street, which is on there previously, and then if we did a fire hydrant line or blocking handicap spots, which again, it's pretty common, and that they will clean it up and not make noise, and that's the only new parts. So does anyone have anything they want to change? Are we close? And this does not state, Nicole didn't mention, and so did Mary about that thinking that it said something about events, we're not, we're not, we're exempt from this form, which everyone was confused what those, what that would be meant. So it's just remove it at this point, and the only way to be exempt from it is to have it on private property. So anyone on city property of any kind? And if you retire, be tied to this form, yeah, with just these three items in this paperwork, which is asking for their license plate number and vehicle information, but that is, it's not asking for license is their licenses, not the driver's licenses.
It's the restaurant license plate.
Again, it's not saying that we're almost out of food truck season for most part this year now, but if we find that it becomes complicated in the beginning of next season or whatever, there's nothing saying you guys couldn't make the approved adjustments or if someone, some reason comes to say that we need to change it.
I think this looks good, because it's simple and people can fill it out.
This is, this is good.
Yeah.
I'll make the motion to, the resolution to approve it.
I'll second.
All right, so we have Lexi and Jean, first this time Lexi introducing the motion, and Jean's seconding to approve the permit for the mobile food vendor permit as requested as part of our ordinance for use on public property. That one goes good.
I.
Yeah.
I think that the thing about the cattle form, they should do two because it is a food item. And, you know, we gotta make sure everybody doesn't say, you know, we can't say, well, that's because you sort of snow cold or something, you know, or so. I think cattle form should be ten bucks, and it's, you know, the whole use, I'm sure they get charged another couple of dollars.
Do you think that they would have a million dollar coverage insurance?
That would be scary.
That would be the thing, since they aren't just.
Does other food trucks got a million dollars?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Some of them even have two.
Wow.
So that's the only thing that would fall in.
But like I said, it's food, though, you know, in this.
But there's a, there's a couple exemptions I was noticing on the Sulan Food District Food Health Web, website about that, whether their cottage and what they can produce in their house and what they can have as a small quantity.
Do they, yeah, do they produce right then, or do they just bring it back?
They produce it there, yeah, they come there on site.
Okay, so how does that go with the people that, the market, people that bring the, Reggie's the town.
Farmers market is exempt from that, and they're exempt from many of the food, the food rules.
So then if someone wanted to bring like their baked goods, I'll just throw out, if someone made banana bread and all of that, would that be, what would that be under then, if it was for one of our events? You know, because we're trying to, you know, bring in more people and, and all of that.
Like you're piping on jamboree.
But we're doing that.
Oh, you're a vendor.
But if someone else wanted to do it, then.
It's the whole thing, isn't it, because it's for sale.
Well, to me, if you're going to farmers market, I think, because like farmers market, a lot of times we'll have somebody with baked goods. So I think they'd let it go. I think you'd let it go.
But like if we do have someone for Fall Festival wanting to bring in like candies that they make or something like that, what do you guys want to see for that? Does it fall under a farmers market type of the clause? Or is it, do we need to have a vendor permit for that? Just because we, we will be asking people to, to come in, so we do want.
I know, but chances are it's just going to be somebody, a local person or even another town.
It will be.
Can we give a, we give a little.
I think we can too.
Give them a little.
Farmers market.
Farmers market.
Oh, like a farmers market.
So anyone not selling out of an actual food truck trailer or cart, essentially push cart as they call it, we will classify them under farmers market category, you're saying?
Do we need to write that somewhere?
Sorry.
For the next year when we come up with this.
Then we get back to the cattle form, because if they have a big cattle that they pull around.
The baked goods, they're not making on site.
They aren't, no.
They're making them at their house.
At home, at their house or whatever.
So does he, that cattle form, does he make it on site or?
He does.
Okay.
Yep.
I would say whatever the Sulan Food District told him, but whatever he has to do, I would assume that would qualify, whether he's gonna fall under that category or not. If he hasn't had to go to that level, then he was fine, then he would qualify, I think, under that farmers market.
Just so that he lets you know.
Yeah, I just kind of wanted clarification, just so I know going forward.
I understand. Okay, any other special on that? I have a motion by Lexi and a second by Jean to approve this permit to the mobile food vendor unit.
I think it looks good.
Okay, then. So yes, we need a roll call.
Steve Heron.
Aye.
Carol Lonco.
Aye.
Jay Jones.
Aye.
Lexi Murphy.
Aye.
Gina Nunn.
Aye.
This, this is not, ordinance changed so that it doesn't have to go to any.
This is not to be published, the other does, the first one.
Yeah, this doesn't have to go to public.
And this doesn't have multiple readings, so again, it was more just to get approved.
Yeah.
And so that you're aware of what's being asked, but the whole thing is going to be, this is always confusing from before.
And that takes like that active now, because we do have one, our last food truck for next week. So I will give them that then, correct? Okay.
Yay. Okay, Ryan and Ben, seven, number seventeen.
Oh, we sure.
Let's start checking tomorrow.
You've seen the agenda.
All right. Unfortunately, I was gonna take this long, so I'm sorry that this is a little long-winded, so. Good evening, mayor members of council and guests tonight. We are here to talk about the new emergency services building. I'm going to go over the history of where we got and where we are today, since there's been different levels of council members. So yes, there's some back history, but I'll try to get through it. I ask that you let me get through my prepared statement, I will be happy, then happy to answer any questions at the end. When the discussion of the new building was brought to the former mayor, former council members, and former city staff, at the time, the fire department was told by the council that we had no discussion was going to be had until we had a drawing and two hundred and fifty thousand dollars fundraised. From that time, at that point, we went to the drawing board and started fundraising for the new building. From an article that was featured in the newspaper, Mike Nezwick from RML Architects reached out to us and wanted to assist us in any way to help design the building. We were very excited with what Mike had shared with us. Not only did his firm have experience designing fire stations, but Mike also has ties back to the Palina community. His wife's family still owns property near Germantown and his farm by a local gentleman also, which was a win-win situation with us. Several members met with Mike and we started the wish list and what we are hoping to have in the new building. Mike also went over the details of this contract and what was expected so we could purchase preliminary plans, so we had something to show people during fundraising events. We were then returning to the city council with highlights from our meeting and the request to sign the contract with RML Architects, so we could start moving forward. The city returned, the city council returned the decision not to sign the contract until we had land purchased. In good faith, we hit the ground running and we held our first major fundraiser event for the new building on July seventeenth, twenty twenty one. We held our first emergency services golf tournament, which also started, which was a huge success. We also started negotiating on our first potential piece of property for the new building. The negotiations eventually stalled and we began to hunt for a new piece of property. And the spring of twenty twenty two was looking up. We had found a new piece of property. I began meeting with Jean and Carol and started discussing, discussing how much the property might be purchased and cost. I met with property owners, which I am gay, keep anonymous, because it's never been public knowledge of our discussions, so I will not discuss who the property owners were. Property owners along with Jean and Carol many times before ever coming to the city council with any information. We finally felt we were at a spot where we needed city council input and they wanted the process, wanted to proceed from here. So on June twenty second, twenty twenty two, we went in closed session at the city council meeting to discuss land purchase. I felt the meeting was very productive and we could move forward after a few questions were answered. Our goal was to have this deal finalized, so we can announce our property location at the emergency services golf tournament on July twenty third, twenty twenty two. But some people had other plans. Questions were not answered, people were not taking care of things that were said to be taken care of. Announcements were not made, and again, people were left with many questions. And guess who had to field all the questions on who had and who? I had no answers, myself and the other members of the department. The property owners started asking questions. Again, I reassured them that things were moving forward along, moving along. I was also being told, at the end of the day, sorry, that things were still moving along, but at the end of the day, it was just a big fat lie. As times moved, the property owners did not like what the response was, and they pulled the plug on the whole negotiation and said is no longer interested in selling the property. So now we're back to square one with no property, no plans on how to move forward from here. This was a big defeat. I had many hours of research and many meetings to get the property sale agreement to this point. And at the end, to end up with nothing, it was very disheartening. In good faith, we pulled up our boots and got back to work looking for property. So no, today negotiations are in progress with new property. That would be a good fit for what we are looking for. We also continue to fundraise and it's been a great year. We have had another large donation from another, from a former resident of Palina, and another anonymous donation came forward. So what are we looking for tonight? We feel that we have proven ourselves how dedicated we are to this project. We have brought property to build on, we have fundraised, and we also have blueprints started. What we are asking for is for you guys to sign the contract with the architect. Every day that this contract is not signed is a day lost of progress. There are many things that we can be doing right now to show progress and move this forward. First off, most importantly, is to finish the building design. Sort out the must haves and our wishes. Funding, with the signed contract, we can get closer to finalized print. We can start organizing better and have a better look of the project cost. This is critical because of grants we are hoping to apply for, which are not open yet. They need a project cost, but we can't have a project cost until we have a signed contract and a signed print. So that's critical. It is also critical with the new school bond passing and the changes in the tax structure, we need to be on our A game and start getting somewhere to figure this out for cost. So we are asking you tonight to show a sign of good faith and show the city, and show the city is truly willing to stand behind this project. Please sign the contract so we can get, start moving forward. Any questions?
Same guy you're going with.
Yeah, RML, I talked to Mike this afternoon, Tisha has the contract. It's ready, he signed it. We just made the okay from the city council. Do you have anything else to add, Ben?
No, just the federal grants, I mean, the dollar amounts are quite substantial that they do give out, but we can't, once they open without plans, costs, um, we can't do anything as far as land. You know, we're working on that, but we need a plan and we can size down that plan, what we can build on. So, um, I don't know what the holdup has been, uh, this town needs one. Also Sheldon is proposing a fifteen million dollar fire station. So these grant, getting ahead of the grants is very crucial, because they're just starting their talks, so.
So yes, from this, from when we started to this point, Mike has given me a lot of dimensions, and that's what we've been shopping for the entire time. It's never straight from that. So, I mean, we're not just shooting from the hip, this is what we're hoping for size. We have a building size that he has preliminary drawings. We have a building size that he has preliminary drawings on and that's what we've been shopping for property with.
I think we need to move on this pretty soon.
So, when we sign this contract, do we have, we start paying him right now?
No. Right now, the fire department has already agreed to put the bill for the preliminary drawings. And that's been the plan since day one, is we were going to put that. But as you can see, nobody wanted to believe us and they left the contract unsigned.
Well, we've had three go-laws.
We stated right away that we needed land before we could build. That was stated, this all started, I was on, last time I was on the council, that's been what?
I may stop right now.
No, just wait, hold on, let me talk.
I may agree to disagree. Right now, I don't want to hear anything, Jay.
I don't care, I can talk. We, last time I was in the council, that's been what? No, he wasn't there. No, when I was on the last...
And I was assistant chief then, Jay.
And we kept coming to the...
I knew everything, Jay. I don't need a refresher course.
Well, you just gave us a refresher course and bad mouthed us.
I did not bad mouth you.
You said we dropped the ball on that ground, that he wanted $42,000 and it was a... Yeah, never mind.
Thank you.
I think we need to move on it sooner than later. We've had three different tournaments now, golf tournaments, raised a lot of money. People need to see that we're serious about it and then I believe we'll be getting more donations.
We have exceeded that threshold too. We've exceeded the threshold of 250.
Time to move.
And if we decide, if we sign the contract and then we still negotiate on things?
There's still this...
For building and everything, right?
I'm just trying to get the ball, like I said, we need to know cost of a lot of this for our grants. We don't have that. And like I said, every day we sit here on our hands is a day lost in progress. There's a ton of background work that has to be done.
Before you can even do it?
Before we can even put a shovel into the dirt.
Okay, wherever it is.
Yeah.
I make the motion of signing it.
I'll second.
And you said, Tish has it?
Yeah, Tish has the contract.
This is made a motion and Jean has seconded.
Shouldn't we have the legal counsel tell us what she thinks about it before we vote on it?
She's looked at it, hasn't she?
I've actually seen it one other time.
She's had the signed contract from Mike for...
I haven't seen anything, I've never seen anything from her.
I don't know that we...
I've never seen it.
She's looked at it and she said it looked good, she recommended it.
Yes. Okay, I don't remember, I can't tell you that.
Well, we heard for sure. Maybe they can revise their motion to include Tish's approval, city attorney approval. Set contract, obviously.
Yep.
Is that fair enough?
They have that there?
Yeah.
We've seen Jean here, right?
Yep.
City attorney approval.
Yep, that way it's covered.
Could you, the agenda just says to discuss it. Can you direct the mayor to sign the contract without more big direction on the agenda?
That's what I'm wondering.
I admit that. Well, no, I don't either. I bet you, I wonder too, because we're just saying discussion here.
I think, I think what we need to do is get the contract here at the next meeting.
I don't think we can wait that long.
But if the contract has been proposed two years ago, it's been, it's been tabled for two years.
Tisha has looked over it and she said it's fine. Mike has signed it.
Can we make an admin that we approve it? Like we've done admin on this?
All night?
All night, basically.
Yeah, I don't know if we can do it or not. Well, yes, the only question would be that we can always have a roll call vote on it.
Make a resolution.
Oh. So, can we do that with not saying it on the agenda?
To...
The agenda's already been approved. But until next week.
I don't think we could, shouldn't wait that long, I really don't.
How about we have a special meeting?
I've already got darts thrown at me the next week, what's another meeting?
I think we've been dragging our feet long enough.
Can't we do a quick special meeting sometime this week? Wednesday?
Get ahold of her, make sure we're good and...
Just do it Wednesday, I don't know, 5:30. It'd take five minutes, maybe.
Well.
Maybe.
Yeah, I think we can approve it this week.
Yes, just so now we can...
We met again.
And send everybody a copy tomorrow and we'll talk to her and get it done on Wednesday. If she's good, we'll set meeting date probably for Wednesday.
Sounds good.
Special meeting to approve some of it.
So, then we get rid of their motion.
Yes, it just does.
Okay.
Yep, just do a special meeting. We're going to go what, Wednesday, is that what everybody thought? Yep, 5:30.
Is Tish still on Amsterdam though?
Yeah, she left, she's gone.
Oh, really, on vacation?
Her son's playing soccer over there. Somebody from her firm.
Yes. Looked at it?
Yeah.
Well, maybe just talk, if they talk to her and she'll tell them over the phone, it's okay or whatever.
When does she, I thought she was coming, on the flight to come back today.
Today, I thought it was this weekend. Oh, no, no, I don't know, I have no clue.
At least if we got the agenda, I am to approve it.
Right.
Approve the signing of the contract.
That's all we're doing, yes. And we got her, you can get her phone, remember you can call her, I'm sure she'll be fine.
There's a motion and a second, don't have to vote next?
Or we have to withdraw the motion. Either way. Which you choose, someone to withdraw it, everyone.
Yeah, withdraw what you said. Throw your motion. I have withdrawn my motion?
Me too.
It's like a whatever.
Yep.
So, all in favor of withdrawing the motion from Lexi and, Lexi made Jean seconded, which agreed to sign the contract already. All, any other discussion first of all? We understand what we're doing, hopefully. All in favor of withdrawing the motion, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, say nay. All ayes, no nays, motion carries, motion carries to withdraw. Motion withdrawn, I mean. Okay. So, now we're to 18. Maya, you got a date you want to, are you close to ready? Do you want to discuss like that or do you not?
I am not going to do anything else with that.
You're, okay. Is someone else supposed to take that?
Somebody else can take the things about it. I've already heard enough. I'm actually the town's fire chief, not the town's parking police and the town street measure. So, I need to redirect my focus back to my correct position.
Fair enough. Yep. Does anyone else want to take the lead on this and get some dates? We just have to have enough notice given so that we can promote it further than, can't throw it in on Wednesday, so I guess I'm getting it if Wednesday's going to happen. Does anyone want to discuss it in August at the next meeting? Or are we going to shoot for September? Are we just going to let it go into October 1st, street parking? I think we got one of those. Pass on that, all right. Abandoned. 19 approved joint purchase of stump grinder share with Primgar. I'm sure you answered the questions they have on that. You received the information from Carol and it has all the stuff that they need. Quote, and it would be a half of that. Something like that would be a half of that. Seventeen hundred and a half, what?
What's the cost on it?
Seventy-two hundred total for freight. So, divide that by two, maybe seven, six, yeah, six hundred. I think it's somewhere in there. I don't see it, I see it earlier, thirty-six hundred per town.
You think it's, we're going to use it a lot, Kelly? Because the guy that you're getting up on Samborn, will he do his own stumps?
For price, yeah.
Oh, it's not included when you start with trees?
No, I mean...
It's extra?
We've always had to hire somebody to run the stump to make up trees.
Oh, really?
Because that's always, you know...
You don't do a very good job. They don't? No, my tree is growing back.
It is, looking healthy for the next...
It's like a bush.
Yeah. And don't you touch it. Well, you like it?
Yeah, I do.
Oh, okay.
Where will this be coming out of what I did?
That's going to be something with streets, probably, yes, because I'm looking for it right away.
I honestly think we could utilize our money better in a different way. It's just my opinion.
Well, we can also, they said we can, they can charge us rent and we can use it if we really wanted one. We have a big deal. I don't want to be charged for rent, though.
I mean, there's people, there's people around that we can hire to grind the stumps and if we grind the stumps that we have in the right of ways, hire somebody, are we going to spend? I don't know what it costs to have a stump ground.
I don't either.
But are we going to spend more than $3,600 to have them all ground? Possibly. I don't know.
I don't either.
And I think these guys, if they want to do it, that's fine. I talked to Kelly about it before and my suggestion was that I need another, another job to do and grind, going out and grinding stumps.
Oh, you mean the help, the city guys?
Yeah.
What's your thoughts, Kelly? What do you think?
I don't know, I mean, I can see the way it don't. I mean, Swayback comes in or whoever, come in and do it. I'm fine with that. I mean, the more stuff like this I have to do, the more stuff, the other things I'm not going to get done.
Because if Swayback does it, you still got to fill in dirt and all that stuff, don't you, clean it up?
So, when we had our share workshop with Primgar, there was an equipment committee. I don't remember who was on it from Primgar, but weren't you the person, did you discuss all that? And talk about what to share and?
No.
No, you don't have anything on that?
No.
Did he reach out to you?
No.
Other than this, that, that, that's all I've heard. I guess, I don't know. I know we got a bunch of trees that are going down, but it's a good deal or not a good deal? But like you said, then you guys have to do it.
Yeah, and that takes away from other things that, you know, that I have to deal with.
So, is Primgar going to purchase one or not?
I think they're doing whatever work.
I think they are, yeah. That's the way I'm understanding it too. Come back later and say, oh, by the way, we've changed our money. We'll take half.
You do have a guy in town that does do stump grinding and that's Ryan Carlson.
Yep.
He has his business.
He's the one that showed it to you.
Right.
And that's the thing, we have other, we have business people in this town that we don't... Yeah, we don't want to take work away from them either, right? I understand that, you know, some of the equipment that we have, we can do the work ourselves, but... You know, we do, we do our own line work and we do our own water mains and that where other people don't do that. So, there are people in the business of doing that themselves.
Well, I don't mind that you're saying given.
That's supporting those businesses.
True. That's true. Yep.
I don't have a problem with it.
I don't either, let's kind of go with it and see what happens, huh?
Yes, we have a motion to not review joint purchase with stump grinder sharing with Primgar at this time. I may also not decline the stump grinder.
I'll second that.
And that's in a motion, that's in a second by Steve to decline the purchase of stump grinder sharing with Primgar at this time. So, any other discussion, questions?
$3,600 and there's over 100 trees, that's $36 a tree that it's going to cost us for that grinder. How much is it going to cost us to hire it out? That's the whole thing.
Yeah, but then you got, you got, I understand we're still paying on the labor, but you have labor in that too. You got to keep that in mind.
So, what would you do then after you're done with this?
What?
What would you do then after you get done with this, and we're last for our stumps?
Yeah, that's the other thing too.
Okay, any other questions, clarification, comments? We have a motion by Lexi and a second by Steve to decline purchase, joint purchase of stump grinder share with Primgar. All in favor of that, say, not that, say aye. Yes, say aye that you want to decline it, sorry.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Tree reports, nay. All others say ayes, motion carries. Didn't I just purchase some stump grinder? Okay, Kelly, do you need a break?
Talk to the desk.
Do you want to call recess for a moment? Keep powering through. Purchase of the rotary blowers, yes, for the lagoon aeration update. Kelly can speak about this, I think I knew you heard this situation and we've talked about this previously and...
We got, we had a compressor grow out of the lagoon. Replace that compressor is $9,000 roughly. If we're going to go forward with the lagoon project, my thoughts are we should just get the rotary blowers that are recommended for the update. It'd be the line, the line four, two, three, and four. If you wanted to get to at some point, you can do that too. Or I can get what we got out there already and get that fixed and go from there.
And so, part of your question on why you're asking for potentially this second one to be purchased, even though it's not currently needed, is it has a long lead time and that we have the ARF funds that needs to be spent by a certain time.
ARF funds need to be spent by 2024.
October.
And it has to be used for the lagoon.
Still needs to have it redid, but that these apparently will be used regardless. Part of the design to last, we're not going to expire or do anything, or be useless in a year or two. Whereas the $9,000 temporary one would essentially be out of work.
And at some point, we'd still be getting this.
Yeah, still be paying this kind of money, fifty-six.
So, why should we have that money?
I think there's 140.
Oh, should be, yeah. So, we will take it right out of there anyhow.
Yep.
Yep.
Yeah. We just need to find out, like you said today, get ahold of them, see if they can start getting some bids.
Right.
Maybe be ready by spring, nice maybe for fall. But that's my question.
And maybe manage to get all that rolling this, this fall for, um, spring.
Yeah, have it done.
I have made the motion that we purchase a, I'll second it. Purchase one or two, with the whole.
The whole patient.
Yeah. To have the bulk of fifty-six thousand. Purchase the, they quoted products, which included the rotary blowers. Okay. Lexi's made a motion to approve the quoted, purchase of quoted material from EES. Approximately fifty-six thousand five hundred thirty-nine dollars and five cents using ARCA funds, obviously we discussed, for that lagoon project, which will be redid hopefully soon. Yep, do we have a second for that?
I signed it.
Okay. Any other questions related to blowers? EES, lagoons. Okay, hearing none, we'll call for a vote. All in favor of approving the quoted purchase from Engineering Equipment Solutions, the rotary blowers to, for the lagoon aeration project, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, say nay. All ayes and no nays, motion carries, purchase approved. Something a little lighter is the MRES. They just sent this email out. They're revising their energy efficiency education program, renaming it, um, I guess, and revising this, so they have this, and they're doing grants to help, as they've done in the past, offset the cost in half. So you have a little information here for fifth grade classes. We got numbers of about forty students between Zion and South Bryan that would be in fifth grade for this next year, which would be a total of six hundred and twenty-four dollars at sixteen dollars each.
Actually, yeah, thirty-two dollars, but then the MRES pays for half.
Yeah, sorry.
And it used to be forty dollars and they dropped it down to thirty-two dollars this year.
And we've done this before.
We did something with the littler, littler kids, yeah, like first graders or something.
With kindergarten.
Like kindergarten, okay.
But it's, it's hard to get out of these older kids.
And we're branded, it's, it's actually part of their coursework that needs state standards for that. They can enter an energy efficiency photo and video contest and win prizes, so we could kind of have a place for people to go with it. And they, they do get materials to take home to their families, which is nice. And not all of them are Balina residents, but it doesn't hurt to share across the.
Well, they get lights and night lights and.
I'm making a motion that we purchase the MRES smart energy squad education materials for the.
I'll second.
Okay, Lexi's made a motion and Jean has seconded. Purchase of the smart energy, MRES smart energy squad materials for the fifth graders of Zion and South Bryan, is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay. Do we have any other discussion or questions? All in favor of approving the purchase of the smart energy squad materials for fifth graders in our community, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All ayes, no nays, motion carries. Purchase approved. Okay, appointments. Uh, the only real appointments we have to discuss would be the airport committee. Because as it turns out, three of you work for Ag State, which is one of, well, it's just currently our primary and only aerial applicator usage right now. So that is definitely a conflict, especially now for us, physician on that job, uh, or in his current position, I understand, um, we've heard of that whole thing. So, uh, we will need to have approval to move Jean and Carol, who are the only two left, unless you want to have outside community members to that committee.
Yeah, whatever. I'm okay with it.
So does anyone, uh, not approve or does anyone want to make a motion to nominate or accept? I guess I'm appointed, so I'm appointed Jean and Carol to the airport committee due to conflict of interest from three of the five of you due to your employers. So I don't, actually I don't know whether you could approve, but I guess if you make that idea, that means you have to go to, uh, outside your council to get it. But you can also, you can do community members. Nicole, what do you know?
Just a part of a year, Jean.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, reports. So the CAPS program, if anyone missed out, the big TV and, and things there over in the lounge room, please see that on your way by. And they will be starting on August twenty-third from two to three-thirty in the lounge room. And early out days, it'll be twelve forty-four to two approximately. And it will be for the first semester only and they'll be using that space except for like election day or anywhere else, when they will go to the library to use their room. Uh, offsets, oh, we, well, I didn't tell that, um. Yeah, there are election materials. Glad I picked up some today for, that's here for anyone who wants to run for your positions or my position has the ability to do so and should step up and do that and be all the materials and you'll just keep them back. Thanks the end of the, what was it, August?
August.
End of September.
Or September, there's two dates.
Oh, there is.
Yeah.
It's just the second one. The first one's we have a primary. So that, um, and you wanna talk quickly about, well, I thought it was, no, you go yours, sorry. It's Angela.
Paint lines at Zion, paint lines at Presby, replaced O-rings and piston on the paint sprayer. Watched these Equinoxes, push-up tree bomb, burned it. Moved dirt and ash powder to make room for the city property. Installed pedestal.
You can say it.
Installed pedestal, built Primgar electric department, fixed library light, fixed some alleys disconnected, street light downtown, cleared area under lean-to. Swept streets, installed socket at the house in North Park. Had a fire call, meter re-reads, tryston pipe at Fields House, locates, fixed broken wire on Wood Street. We took out the speed bumps on North Main. Had a tree branch at Marty Weber's we took down. Backed a hole for a pole and set the pole. Pulled wire at Fields House, located dirt, arms of water, installed electric on Wood Street. Installed guy at school, did August street at Lagoons. Dead-ended wire at, on Green Street. Took a bunch of overhead wire on Green Street down, took a bunch of overhead wire on North Park down. Hooked up service at Fields House, install wire at, at Wood Street, install bolt at Mueller's and luxury service.
Did you bolt?
We did this while you were on vacation. Any questions for Kelly that you haven't already asked about his equipment and his plans, his work.
Do you have that MRES guy, Kelly, is he still coming? That Jeff?
Mm-hmm.
And does he have ID's and stuff that he comes and he actually works with you or what?
Yeah.
He does, okay. Are you guys pleased with everything?
Uh, he, he was here with Kate and I was on the kitchen, so.
And so does he come monthly or weekly or what?
Monthly.
Monthly, okay. So when's he coming back?
This week, I believe.
Okay, sounds good. Sounds good?
All right, you were sharing your half of shell for the.
Um, well, we just got news today that they're changing like, I can't remember what she said, but something with our offsets, they're changing it to set-offs or something. So there's paperwork coming out for that that we have to have in by the end of August, but I don't think there's anything too strenuous.
It's to state or state?
Yeah. Yep. Yeah.
Go ahead.
Oh, yes, we had, where was it, Rolf? Yes, Angela from Rolf, she came down to help figure out our taxes for one of our sales taxes on utility billing stuff. Those are all up to date and then she started helping us with bank recs. So we have, through August done.
August is finally done.
Yes, it's done.
It's the biggest mess with the IFRS and the taxes and everything.
Which year? August the.
Of last.
Twenty-two.
Yes, they couldn't get it to come together at all. IFRS was a mess.
Okay, so it's pretty much IFRS.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Few other things.
Yeah.
But they weren't, just didn't get posted. So the whole, now they can start with September and we can go on down the line, get all our treasury reports done.
Cool.
And she thinks she's done enough and she can just call. You can call.
Mm-hmm.
You or Michelle, if there's a problem. So hopefully, that's where we're at.
Okay. Uh, since Nick's not here, might I give him the last to have a, if anybody don't want to report, if anything, you're probably, you said the group? Matt, are you running the library?
Don't forget the kite flying tomorrow. Yeah, out at the Swanson complex, the library is sponsoring that.
Oh, cool.
So if you remember, you know, take your kids out there and they can fly kites.
What time is it?
Pardon?
What time is that?
Uh, I'm not quite sure about the time.
It's on Facebook.
Yeah.
If they can't. Just do friendly calling public library and just announce them on there.
Okay.
But it's, it's through the library and they're doing it off complex and it's fun for kids, maybe even adults. I haven't flown a kite for a long time.
Yeah, because you're asking for Swanson, whatever, so. Okay, any other committee reports then? Uh, Brian is not here, updating from the airport. Andy's meeting, anything, anyone?
I made the motion to adjourn.
Okay.
Yeah, how are you?
I sent a motion and Steve seconded to adjourn. Do we have any other discussions? Someone in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Seven fifty-one, adjourn. And four-eight.
We're sitting here at five thirty, yeah.
Possibly, yeah, we can see if we can petition a reply. If we can get a response or confirmation, we should. That would be the soonest you could do it.
Thank you, Kelly.
Thank you very much.
I think there were the street lights out in the Mar Street. Carol? What? Do you like calling? They bring ours.
We have. Talk to the guy, uh, all right, there you go. And it's about here, take two. I love this. And I don't, we've forgotten the guy who's sort of been doing some of the grants, but they're.